Good evening. I am calling this building committee meeting to order. It is November 6, 2025. I am stepping in to chair since Pam Walsh is unable to be here. But other than that, we have a very full room. I think all of the building committee is here with the exception of Dana and as well as our architects and administrators. So the agenda tonight is HMF will be making, let me say that better. HMFH will be making a presentation about academic pods, the auditorium, a gym and multipurpose room and art. And then when that is complete, we will summarize next steps. So unless Mr. Cashman or Mr. Dunn have anything to add, or if any of the building committee has any questions or anything, I'm going to pass it over to HMFH.
Great.
Holly, Tina, go.
So we just wanted to give everybody a deeper dive into some of the spaces in the new building. We have videos and drawings that we'll show you tonight. We're doing the spaces that Jim noted and then at the next meeting, we'll do another series of spaces. And then at the January meeting, we'll do the exterior with materials and the site layout and that whole piece. So that's our agenda for the next few meetings. Take it away, Holly.
Okay. So here's what we're going to talk about tonight and I'm going to dive right into one of the team pods. So you know, just a reminder, we have nine team pods in the building, three per floor. Three per floor over three floors. So the team pods are all identical. So it'll give you flexibility in how you want to organize the school in the future. So let's look at one of the team pods. So the team pod is really intended to be, you know, students home base throughout the day. So everything they need is in their team pod. So we have the three core academic classrooms along the south. They're all getting Southlight. And then the science classroom is on the left. So that is a dedicated science lab space. Do you want me to zoom into that?
No, I was going to say, can you see the cursor yet? I was just going to use it to point.
Oh, okay. If you want to point, that would be great.
So that's science right there.
So that's the science classroom. Each team pod also has a small group room, which is right there. And then a flexible instruction space, which will seat about 10 students in each flexible instruction space. So each team pod also has a cluster of toilet rooms. So there are three single user toilet rooms in each cluster along with a drinking fountain and water filling station right there. The team pod is also lined with lockers. So you can see on the kind of perimeter of the team pod. And then there's also lockers ringing that project area kind of with a low wall. So each student will get a locker within their team pod. Some of the other spaces that we have in the sort of the team pod zone, there is a science prep room. One science prep room per floor, which is right above that breakout room there.
This one, yeah.
Right there. There's a science prep room per floor. And then in the center pod on each floor, there is a teacher planning room and faculty toilet rooms. And there's also a small lactation room off of the teacher planning room, which is little green square right there. So all of the team pods are identical, you know, with the exception of that stuff I just pointed out. That's kind of on the north end that attaches to the main street. The other feature of the team pod is there is one additional classroom that's attached to each team pod. So there's another 900 square foot classroom. Are you seeing the cursor there? There we go. That opens into each team pod. So that gives you future flexibility. If you have a kind of a bubble year and you need an additional classroom in a pod. And those classrooms are also, you can access them from the main street. So you're not seeing this in this view, but that classroom has two entrances. So it can be entered from the main street or from within the team pod. So really just to give you kind of maximum flexibility. So this is a, on the left is a 3D view of the pod. So you're looking out, you're looking, you're kind of standing between the science classroom and this corner classroom. They're looking into the team pod space. So there will be technology in that team pod area and the project area. So there'll be whatever you choose. I think we're talking about short throw projectors right now and then a big whiteboard. So this is a great space that can be used for kind of long-term projects or pullout. You could have a group of students kind of go out into the project area and be working on something as in a small group. But you still have visibility from within the classroom. So you'll see that we have a little video that we're going to show you of the space. Any questions about the team pod? Or do you want me to just play the video and then we can go dive into questions? Okay, so here we go. This is going to work. I can't see the, yeah, there's the thing. Can you hit it?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is walking into the team pod from the little corridor that connects from the main street. So you can see this is the open project area. And then you have the flexible instruction room there with the orange wall on the right. Kind of looking back towards main street now, this is sort of the low wall with the lockers. We also have built into this low wall, a sink and a kind of recycling center. So you've got a place to clean up if you have messy projects going on out there. That's the small group room on the left. And this is now, you're in one of the classrooms. You can see you have that visibility from each classroom back into the project area. That's a pinup wall on the left. This is actually sort of the opposite of the teaching wall, but we have a second whiteboard in here. So you could have students working, working at a problem on that wall and then spinning around. This is the teaching wall with the large whiteboard and the short throw projector. And then this is the science lab. This is the teaching wall of the science room. And you can see you have visibility again out into the project area. Each classroom kind of has a pinup wall. That's the light green wall you see there. So there's some built-in tall storage along that wall. And then here you can see the science lab station. So those tables are movable, so you can reconfigure the classroom. But those benches can basically connect to the perimeter casework where you have power and water.
So your classroom is either in lab mode, which is what you saw, or you can move the tables and put them into the middle of the space and then it's in sort of lecture mode.
Can you go back to the class, the non-science classroom?
Yep. Do you want, I can just, you want me to play the whole video again or do you want me to just zoom?
I'm just curious about the storage in the...
Yeah, let me show you. Let's go back to the plan. We can look at the plan. Okay, man. There we go. I can zoom in a little bit. So each, each classroom has three tall storage cabinets here. And those sort of had the white doors on them. And then they, those could be whiteboard doors too, if that interests you. So you could actually use it as another whiteboard surface. And then there's a low counter here. And that, what you're seeing underneath that counter is actually the displacement diffuser. So the air is being delivered into these rooms through displacement. So it's sort of a very low velocity and we're delivering air low. And then it's returned high. So that's a healthier way to deliver air into the classrooms.
And it's very quiet.
Yeah, and it's very quiet.
It basically like comes out, hits the warm bodies and then warms it up. And then it rises up and takes like all the germs and all that with it.
And so above that displacement diffuser, you do have some cubbies for some books and some other storage. And that's where the pinup wall is too, above that low cabinet. And then there are some more central storage closets on each floor that you can use for, you know, book storage and sort of more long-term storage of teaching materials.
And we haven't gotten into furniture selections yet. So these are kind of set up with just a variety of furniture right now. But we'll have those conversations at a later date. And we can talk about whether you want desks or you want tables that fit two students. Or there's lots of different types of furniture that we can bring in and show you.
And we're going to be re-engaging with the faculty and staff sometime in the next two weeks. So we're, I owe Jay some dates, but we're going to come back and start meeting with teachers again too.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Principal Richard, how are these spaces maybe utilized now without the actual space? Like what would be going on now or where would this team, what do you envision in this team area? What do you envision in this flexible instruction?
It seems like spaces you don't have now.
Yep.
And why would you need them?
Yeah, so I think, you know, when you think of all like some are interventionist, multilanguage learners. And you know, our conversation is, you know, I talked with my staff a little bit about this today. Is that, you know, we're going to decide, you know, what opportunities are going to present themselves with flexible instruction space. But I'm confident we will have people in those areas. You know, we want the interventions and services where the kids are at. So some of them might be special education. I already mentioned multilanguage learners. So we'll be using those spaces. We just haven't had conversations what that could look like yet.
I can speak a little bit to that also, Liz. Like right now, we would love to have full team meetings, like I'm team eight one. And sometimes you need to have a family meeting to discuss something. But we don't have one space that can easily fit the kids without going all the way down to the cafeteria or... So that would be a great use of that space to have a team meeting. I also could see, especially with the sinks, using that space for projects instead of my classroom. For cleanup purposes, the, just the larger space would allow just more opportunities. So at least for that community space, that's what I could see it being used for.
Is that what you meant, Liz, the community space?
Yeah, like a community space, the flex instruction, the small group, then there's another flex instruction. It just seems like a lot of more space than what is currently. And I'm just wondering why it's needed.
Yeah, I mean, we have small groups right now. Usually they work in the hallways with an adult. So instead of the kids being in the hallways, they'll have a little bit more privacy. Like the team area, I'm actually really excited about. I'll give you an example. You can meet with the team group of kids. I've been reminding my seventh graders about our hands-off expectations. So what I actually do is I walk around, go to each advisory to kind of talk to them. Here, I would just have them all out in the group and visit with them, you know, have conversations about whatever we want to talk about. Offer many positive things too. It just provides that quick access to, you know, meet with a large group of kids.
Instead of having to have them all go down to a different space and take...
Or do what I did, you know, today, I literally walked around each advisory, you know, to talk to them. And I can have them all, you know, that has less impact on advisory time.
To efficiency. And all hearing the same message at once. And then in regards to small group spaces as well, you know, right now, if a student has been absent and you don't want them in the room because, or they need to make up something, they're sitting on the floor in the hall taking a test. That's not fair considering the other kids got to sit at a desk, you know, to take a test. And there's kids walking by and I would use that space, especially if I can see, you know, with that glass. I could peek in, they're taking the test or doing whatever it is they need to do on their own. That space would definitely be used for that.
Okay. Would kids now need intervention or help, whatever that looks like, right? They need to leave and walk a fair distance. Even those like that small group space right there, 150 square feet. Like if I need to have a private conversation, a kid needs my help. I can, instead of having to come all the way down the office, just that's a private room. Same thing with our counseling staff. So it's like kind of more flexibility to go to the kids instead of the kids having to walk a distance to go see somebody.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So who, who's envisioned to be in the flexible instruction space? Because it seems to be adjacent to speech and calming. And I'm just wondering if you're using gentle language for special education. A room dedicated to the delivery of special education. Because most schools have special education classrooms. You all know that. I believe in inclusive education. So is that just warm and fluffy language for a special education room?
Lisa, I would say it's just flexible space and to be fair, the architects know. We really haven't revisited and had some of these conversations about what some of these spaces have looked like for actually quite a long time.
So let me just phrase it a different way and maybe you can help. So if we were to continue building a school using the existing model in the Concord School District, there would be named dedicated special education classrooms. And this layout does not have that. So if you're going to continue having special education classrooms, where are they in this picture?
I think they could be, yeah, they could be in the small group space. They could be in a flexible instruction space. Kind of like what we talked about this project, we wanted to have flexible space. So someone 30 years down the road, whatever education looks like, they'll have that kind of flexibility. So we believe in inclusion and we include kids whenever possible. So I could envision, you know, we'll have students on team that have IP needs. They'll be right in the classroom, but if a teacher needed to talk with them or provide intervention, they'd do it right there on team right now instead of walking a great distance.
Sure.
They're not making sense.
I think that you currently have special, dedicated special education classrooms. And where are those students going to be on that floor plan?
Kids with more intensive needs.
Yes. Not, again, not that, not that that's, you know, inclusive supportive education in general education classrooms is, you know, what I think that all Concord schools should be doing. But where, where are they?
So I think those flexible spaces that we're talking about here, I think they're labeled that way so that they can move around as needed every year depending on what the students need. So each pod has, has, you know, one extra classroom. And like Holly said, that could be, if there's a bubble, a team could go in there and have an extra general classroom. But it could also be special education classroom if that's what needed, is needed, you know? And there's three different sizes of those flexible rooms. There's a 150, a 350, and then one that's 850. So they'll fit sort of any, any size population that you have.
Sure. So there is the plan to continue the model of different types of segregated classroom options for students with disabilities in this model, which is the existing model that Concord School District has for students.
There's space to do that if that's, if that's what they choose. Yes. So there are a whole series...
I don't know what my special ed model is going to look like this year. I don't, depends on the kids. You don't know how many kids you can have on the glass. And we change the model because it's appropriate. It needs to look different, so.
Lisa did that. Answer your question.
She did.
Okay. Mr. Cashman, did you have your hand?
Very, I did. Just considerations. We do a lot of work with home and security. And as we're developing the plans somewhere along the lines, if we could map the plans out into kind of grid coordinates. Tim and I have talked about that with our existing buildings. But if we are working with, you know, emergency responders, it's easy to identify. Especially if it's from the start in the plans. Other things that we commonly do are window and door numbers for...
Yes, we'll definitely do those.
All of that, blinds and shades.
Definitely, yes.
And I mean on interior windows and doors too.
Yes.
Blue lights, that's emergency alerting, all of that stuff. I'm sure it's all part of it.
And we're actually going to be meeting with police and fire hopefully in the next couple of weeks to go through the plans now that they're pretty far along in development and get their feedback on that too. So, yes. And each of those pods gets locked down too. You'll see like there's double doors. There's two ways into each pod and they have double doors so that you can lock them in the event of, you know, a lockdown or any of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jay, go ahead.
Access control, what are the thoughts on that so far as far as electronic access on all doors, some doors? Have you got into that level of detail yet?
Yes, we have. And it won't be every single door, but it'll be a lot of the doors. Like the general classrooms won't probably have key fobs, but you could have that on the doors to the pods. And any door that has that on it will automatically lock down. So, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I don't know if you can read this, but there are, basically all of the team pods can be closed off from the main street. So the building can be used after hours and the team pods can be secured.
There's like a line of doors right here that kind of goes across.
And will that work for that flexible space that you mentioned that's accessible from main street?
Yes.
Yep. So what I wanted to point out about the classrooms was that on, on, there are about, I think, nine or 10 classrooms that are accessible either from within the team pod or from within the corridor. So those could be world language classrooms, they could be health classrooms. You know, we're giving you space and then you can decide how you, how you want to use it. But we're providing those classrooms, you know, with multiple entrances. So you have options on how you want to use them.
Go ahead, Mr. Dunn. Do you have this set up as six, seven, eight right now or is it...
No, it's, it's flexible. Right now, all of the team pods are identical. And that's actually something we do need to meet with the science teachers and find out exactly what chemicals they're using in different classes. And maybe there are some slightly different requirements for eighth grade than there are for sixth grade. But right now, everything is identical. So you can organize the building vertically or horizontally. So you could stack teams or you could have teams by floor.
Can I ask a question? Going back to your layout of the team pods. And if I'm, you know, correct me, that's 100 kids in each of those?
Yes.
And I'm just asking over, like pick any one of those. You have the team area, which is, may have tables and all. And then you have the aisles and there are 100 lockers along there somewhere. And is there adequate space for kids to be at lockers, kids to be passing and kids in wheelchairs and on crutches? Is that a wide, I couldn't tell because, you know, it's just a graphic and just a little movie. But I just wanted to make sure that we are accounting for the fact that we have a lot of people. It looks like they're most, many, much of the time could be in this small space. Okay?
Yep.
I think this, this walkway here is about six feet. So between the classrooms and that long low bank of lockers, it's six feet.
And there are 100 lockers in it? Okay.
Did I hear correctly that the team area can hold up to 100 students?
No.
Oh, okay. So that's not where the, not where team meeting.
You could have, you could have two full classes, like if you wanted them seated on the floor. You could have, you know, two classes come out and work on a project together in there. You could actually, if they're all standing and they're in the corridor too, you could talk to all the kids at once. You could put them in there. Not seated.
Especially sixth graders.
I had another question, kind of looping back to the science rooms. Are there going to be fume hoods in there?
We have to talk to the teachers about what chemicals they use. Oftentimes in middle schools, we don't have fume hoods. But maybe at the eighth grade level, you might want them. And they have versions now that are duckless, which are really great. So they don't use as much energy. So those would be what we would propose. You just change filters on them and they're, they're really great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Go on.
All right, we're going to move on to the auditorium space now. Our presentation cooperates. It's a little wonky with the videos kind of tucked into it. It takes a little while to move, so.
Okay, so as Tina mentioned, we're going to talk about the auditorium, band orchestra and chorus spaces right now. So those are on the upper right there on the ground floor. So kind of just reminding everybody where we ended up with the auditorium is what we have is a flexible auditorium that has retractable seats in it. And that's going to allow you to use it for a whole bunch of different functions and configure the seating in many different ways. So it can be used for a play, it can be used for a band performance. It could even be used for wrestling meet or for, you know, a cheer competition. So it's a really flexible space. This is showing the sort of the space at its maximum capacity, which is 450 seats. So let me point to this here. So... Yeah, if you want to point, that would be great. So there are about 350 seats in the retractable bleachers. And then there are some seats on the floor. There are curtains that can be drawn to kind of create a frame to create like a proscenium. Or you can have those open and have a, this is showing a 50-person band in the space. This has also been designed so all of the music spaces can kind of serve as back of house spaces for a performance. So you could kind of use those spaces as a green room where students can be getting ready. There are three toilet rooms back in this zone too. So if you have a bunch of performers and across from that, there's a counter with a sink and a mirror. So a kind of little dressing area, kind of a makeup counter for kids to get ready. We've got the band chorus, band orchestra and chorus rooms. And all of those rooms can be used, you know, to support a performance. And, you know, we do have light locks for the stage. So this is a real, you know, proper performance space. And so there are light locks from the entry and also for the performers in the back. There is a fixed balcony. So those retractable bleachers will connect up to the balcony on the second floor. The balcony has about 105 seats in it. There is a control room in the middle of the rear of the theater. So it's open to the space, so it's a controlled space. And we also have a pipe grid in the space that you can hang lighting from. So we'll show you that in some of the upcoming images. I want to show you another configuration now. So this is showing you the bleachers kind of retract... So this is showing you the bleachers kind of retracted halfway and this could support, you know, 100 student band on the floor or it could support more of a kind of a theater in the round performance if you wanted to set up the space with some seats around the perimeter and have performers in the center of the space. So that's about 254 seats in the bleachers, in the, not bleachers, retractable seats. It's a full, it's a real auditorium seat, it's not, you're not sitting on bleachers.
Actually, we got them delivered to the office today and they're really nice. We're sitting in them, so we'll have to bring them up here for you to see.
Yeah.
They're comfy.
They'll be delivered, we're going to have them sent to the middle school sometime in the next week, so everyone can go check them out if they want. There are two options for chairs, so. So that's the second option. And then the third option is the bleachers fully retracted and what you're seeing here is the large rectangle is a cheer competition mat and then the smaller rectangle is a wrestling mat. So you could use this space for like a wrestling meet and have the audience up in the balcony overlooking, you know, performance or meet below. So those are sort of the three main options for seating, but here, this diagram shows the bleachers fully out, which is 14 rows, so like I said, about 300 seats. Partially retracted, it's seven rows. Now just to note, when they are partially retracted, there's no connection up to the balcony at that point, so there'll be a gate that closes off the balcony from the second floor. And then the third option is showing the bleachers fully retracted.
On the retracted version, if there was someone that was in a wheelchair, where would they, where would they be able to sit?
On the floor, anywhere.
But not in with the rest of the group?
Which, which way are you talking about?
Fully retracted?
Oh, fully, fully retracted. Well, everybody would be on the floor.
Everybody's on, okay, so there's nobody in the balcony, okay, either or.
And they can get to the balcony too.
The balcony is fully accessible.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Is there going to be any kind of screen, like to watch movies or?
Yes. Yeah, and you'll see that in the next image, actually.
Yep, there it is.
Yeah, so here's a kind of a section perspective of the space, so what you're seeing, there's a screen on the right. You can see the curtains on the back wall, so that will allow you to kind of create a stage in the space. I think the curtains are shown a little bit too far back, but we'll pull, pull them forward a little bit. There is a big window to the courtyard there, but that will have blackout shades on it, so you can, you know, fully darken this space, but if you have kids in there during the day and you're having a speaker or an assembly, you'll have some natural light in this space. And you can see up above, we have a pipe grid, so the pipe grid will allow them to hang lights wherever they want to light a performance or the pipe grid can also be used to hang scrims or, you know, scenery for a performance. Kind of a little, kind of clouds you see on the right-hand side are acoustical reflectors and what, what those do is they'll help push the sound into the center of the space when you have a, a music performance.
And there's the sound booth.
Yep, and there's the control position, so.
And there'll be a projector back here that will project to that big screen.
The, the seating, the retractable seating is motorized, so it's, I think, easier to retract than what you have now. There's sort of a button at the end of each aisle that someone will need to fold the seats down and then it's, you know, it's motorized at that point. You'll push a button and the seats will retract.
But if that motor breaks, it can be manually retracted?
That's a good question. Yeah, we can, we can ask that. I think there's probably, you know.
An override?
A function that can do that.
What is the floor material?
So we've really thought about this as a flexible space, so it's a painted hardboard floor, which allows you to, you know, you can attach things to it if you have a performance.
Yeah.
So.
And the wrestlers will be using the mats and cheerleaders the same, so they should be all set with that type of floor too.
Right, it's essentially kind of a sprung floor.
Yeah, it's like the gym floor underneath, it's got like a sandwich with springs in it and, you know, a whole assembly.
Is it soft? Like would it be risk of damage if there was wrestling or cheer or anything?
No, no, it's heavy duty.
And, and we will have to reinforce the floor under where the seats retract because there are wheels kind of on the retractable seats, but we have a way to, to deal with that.
We have a video of this too, right?
Yep, we have a video, so. Where's the little button here it is? So this is from the balcony, looking down, you can see, you know, there's the projection screen kind of fully retracted. You can see the pipe grid up above, the ceiling would probably all be painted dark, it's still showing the ceiling white there, but you kind of want that all to go away. The structure is exposed in this space and you'll have exposed ductwork too, but it'll all be painted out dark. And these are the retractable seats, fully open in this view. You also have some loose chairs down on the floor, which we have storage for kind of next to the entrance of the auditorium. You can see the acoustical reflector is kind of above where the performers would be. And this is down on the floor looking back and kind of pivoting to look out that window into the courtyard.
And Principal Richard, I assume that staff would be utilizing the space is able to look at, make sure this is what they're okay with?
Yeah. Love and Rudell?
They did, I mean, we met with the, the drama and the music folks before, so they've, they've seen this, but we're going to update them because we've developed it further since they've seen it, so.
It's been a while, they'll be excited to see.
They haven't seen the videos.
They're going to put it on our screens in our school, so the kids get to see this stuff too.
Question about the peripheral spaces around the auditorium.
Yeah.
If this were to be used, and I would hope it would be used by not only the school district, but the community, I say we had a community meeting there. Bathrooms are adequate, easily accessible for adults as well as children.
Yes.
Things, all of those peripheral items there with regards to.
Yeah, there's bathrooms, there's bathrooms here, there's also gang, more gang toilets, right?
Yeah, there, there are some large community style toilet rooms further to the west, so on the other side of the cafeteria and I can.
Towards the gym.
So, so on the ground floor, so there are some toilet rooms here, so there's a small cluster of toilet rooms here, but there's a large grouping of toilet rooms here, so these are the only kind of community style toilet rooms in the building. There are two single user toilet rooms and then I think there are five fixtures in each of these kind of boys and girls rooms here on the ground floor. So when you have big performances, you can have people using these bathrooms and these bathrooms and still keep the team pods locked off.
The Main Street will be kind of the public space.
Will they walk through, how will they access that through the cafeteria or the?
Yeah, either way.
Okay. But I do, so I'm assuming, I'm making an assumption, these are all doors that will be locked.
Correct, yeah.
In the public. So the safety is better.
Right, we, we would just have the multipurpose, which is back there, the big purple space. There's the wood shop is back there and then upstairs is the gym, so that would all be open.
Where's the tech control room? You know, just for the auditorium space, is there like a little?
That's the control booth that we were talking about, that's up in the back.
So you can see, yep. Here we go. No, the mouse.
I don't think the mouse works, I think it's just the, so, can you see that?
Okay.
Up there.
So that's the control position and it's a little bit higher, so there's ramp to get up there and then there is, the gray is the sort of the control, the lockable kind of control room with, you know, your servers or anything that you need for the auditorium.
And the first floor is storage in those gray areas?
Yes. Yep, so there's chair storage under there and we've also provided for the cheer mat storage underneath the, that gray zone kind of at the back end of the auditorium on the ground floor, because we have sized the kind of main cafeteria space to also accommodate a cheer mat in the cafeteria. So we're storing those right next to that cafeteria space.
The school has used like every space in the school now, every hour of the day, so we wanted to do the same thing here. There's roughly the same number of spaces in the new building, so you'll be able to use all of them.
High school cheerleaders were practicing during our staff meeting. So it's, you know, again, I think that we talked about that, like this isn't just about middle school kids, it's about the entire school community, high school, elementary school, community.
Could we look at the cafeteria area again you just showed?
Sure, we're going to, we're going to dive into the Main Street and cafeteria at the next meeting, but we can look at it on the, the overall plan if you want.
That's, well.
We're still working on that too, just, just so you know.
Okay, because what I'm wondering is, the tech ed rooms, are those the two purple rooms towards the back?
No, that's fitness and OTPT.
Okay. Where's the tech ed?
Woodshop is here and robotics is above it.
So how would kids get to that space?
They would just, they'd go down, they, I mean, depending where they're coming from, so I'm having trouble with the mouse. They would, they could come down the corridor here and walk through or they could just, there'll be a clear path right here that leads them straight down there.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about, that the kids are going to be mingling with cafeteria and kids during lunch and that is a recipe for disaster. There really needs to be a clear delineation of where they're going because otherwise we're, you're going to, it just could lead to a lot of chaos. If there's not a clear path and it becomes a little bit more open to the cafeteria, so.
Okay, we'll keep that in mind as we're finishing those layouts in there and we'll have an enlarged plan so you can talk through it next time with us.
Yeah, yeah, we've been kind of finessing that ramp and, and how those spaces all come together in the center there.
Our hope is that the ramp is actually going to create a sort of smaller, you could see it sort of in this plan, there's like a setup of small tables and that's going to have a lower ceiling so that we know that not every student wants to sit in the big open cafeteria, so there'll be an opportunity for lunch bunch or things to happen in a quieter setting. So we'll lower the ceiling and we'll put in acoustics and it'll be an alternative kind of spot.
What's the squiggly line area adjacent to the ramp?
There's, there's a nook that we're creating for like, like an amphitheater type seating. It doesn't look quite like this anymore, it's a little bit smaller and more intimate, but it'll allow that to be a project area too. So if you have a speaker in and like Jay, you were saying, I want to take all the seventh graders in to like do something, they could all, you know, sit there and watch somebody giving a presentation. So we're just trying to find, you know, ways to use every inch of the building for all kinds of multipurpose things.
And it may not be clear, but that platform is accessible from the ramp or from the stair, so it's fully accessible.
Yep. The ramp is very long, so we're trying to be creative with it and use it to make a space and a nook, so it's, it's getting detailed right now and it's going to be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. We also have an idea of maybe creating a nice kind of green space outside of the, there's like a curtain wall at the end of the Main Street and that nook will look out into it, so we're going to plant some trees out there and it'll just be a nice kind of view for the students that are sitting in that kind of more quiet intimate space, kind of connection to nature for them. All right, we can go on to the next set of spaces.
So now we're going to talk about the gym. Sorry, this is a little slow advancing. Here we go. Okay. So we're going to talk about the gym. So this is the ground floor plan, so there is the multipurpose PE room on the ground floor, so that's the purple square, I'll let Tina point there, it's the purple square at the top. So I think that this space will be used for PE classes, I know this will also be heavily used by wrestling after school, but this is really a multipurpose flexible space and it is adjacent to the fitness room, which is right there kind of on the corner and OTPT, which is adjacent to the fitness room. From these spaces, you can, you know, head out to the athletic fields through the stair that's right in the corner.
There.
No, that one there, yeah. So those doors kind of will take you right towards the athletic fields. And then on the second floor, we have the large gymnasium. So this is a large gym and it is accessible from the Main Street through the ramp or through that stair and they'll sort of lead you right to the entry of the gym. We've got sort of a nice landing outside of the gym so people can gather before, after an event.
Also the two elevators are here.
Right, so those will bring people up to the gym on the second floor.
Better view of it.
Yep, and then kind of zooming into the gym, again, this is a flexible space, so the gym can be configured with two cross courts, so you can pull a curtain down the center and have two separate groups in the large gym. You could also have a, you know, a full competition court in here and pull out the bleachers and seat about 700 people. You could also pull out the bleachers all the way for a full school assembly, so that's going to seat 900 students when the bleachers are fully out.
And you can't use the court when that's happening, so you would use the bleachers in the second position if you had a competition game going on in there.
And then the third or the final layout is if you wanted to use this space for graduation, you could pull the bleachers all the way out, have 900 people in the bleachers and then you could have 300 seats on the floor and a stage set up at the north end. We're also putting in a projection screen in this space along the north wall, so you could use this for movies or presenters and have a backdrop. You just have a projector on a rolling cart in this space. There's kind of ample athletic storage at the north end of the gym for, you know, all sorts of athletic equipment. We are specifying some hoists for some of the mats, some of the things that are a little bit harder to move. There is a PE office on the corner there with a window directly into the gym, so that's for the PE director and then there's a second office up there on the right-hand side for the rest of the PE staff, PE and health staff, and they have some visibility into that multipurpose room, which is down on the first floor. There are also some windows that look down into that multipurpose room. In the upper left-hand corner, we do have changing rooms and some additional toilet rooms.
We're talking about putting in maybe roll down doors here and here, so that if you're not having like an athletic event, maybe it's graduation, you can then use the toilet rooms, which are in the front of those team rooms, to kind of separate off the back. And then more single user toilets and some with showers here.
So to get here on the event, people would still have, the public would still have to come in through the main doors and then come up a level?
Correct, yep. So, or you could choose to let people in down here from the courtyard if it's like an after hours, they could come in this way and come up through the elevator potentially if they're parked in the back.
My thoughts were just on security, as much as the building is secure.
Yeah, I mean, you just have to, right.
I know the gym teachers are quite concerned about the location of the gym in relation to the fields. You know, it's not a very easy transition for them to take a class from their essentially indoor classroom to the outdoor classroom. It's pretty far and that's a lot of lost class time for them, so they have expressed that as a concern. Additionally, with the gym being on the second floor, they are concerned about that taking more time as well, so that on top of being far away from the fields has been brought up as a concern.
We can tell you how far it is, like in terms of distance. It's not, I mean, it's, it's fairly direct, they're just going to go across that back courtyard and the fields are.
We have a site plan here.
Maybe we go to it after.
We'll pull up the site plan at the end and we can talk about that travel distance.
Building it at South Street as opposed to another location. There was a question from community members and I just want to be sure that we're covering it, which is, you know, safety for an evacuation from the gym if whatever, right? People had to leave there.
Sure.
I'm assuming that you've already checked and within fire code and certainly within, you know, expectations, those stairwells that are in the left and right of the upper part as well as the ramp provide adequate.
And there's another stair that you can access from the front side of that plus the main stair, so there's multiple ways out and down.
In addition. In addition, uh, fire mitigation and fire suppression is much better than it was maybe when I was in.
Correct, yes.
So we have a, one of the first drawings in our drawing set is a code sheet, and it actually diagrams how everyone is gonna get out of the building. So we count the occupant in every space in the building and we show where they're gonna go and we calculate the capacity of each stair, so.
And door.
This has been sort of rigorously vetted, I would say. And we're gonna meet with the, um, fire department and, um, uh, police department again, we've already met with them several times, but we haven't talked in great detail about the interior of the building yet, but.
But they'll make us size these spaces for as many people as can fit in there, you know.
And I'm not sure it's clear.
Not just nine hundred.
This is an eight-foot wide stair, so there is a lot of egress capacity from the second floor, so these are pretty big, so it's pretty big stairs.
You've taken into account, you know, old people with bad knees like myself, as well as.
You can use the ramp.
With, uh, as I said previously, people on, in wheelchairs with crutches and, oh, okay. I just, I just wanted to be sure that anyone watching knew that that was thoroughly vetted and thoroughly addressed, because I appreciate those folks bringing that up. And I very much appreciate the fact that you've already ta, addressed it, so.
The other thing is, we do have two schools that have the gyms on the second floor. Granted, the egress is a little, uh, shorter, the high school. Gym is on the second floor and Krista McColl.
In the high school, the gym's on the second floor with stairwells in the back and a ramp. It's an outside ramp, but it's a ramp in the front, yeah.
You have a ramp from that student center and a ramp coming up the west side of the, the gym as well.
Okay, and, and I'm trusting superintendent, we don't have issues there?
Nope.
Okay.
We, we accommodate, we, we work with people and they do work.
Thank you. Other questions?
Um, the, uh, size of the proposed gym versus the size of the existing gym, are they similar?
Um, the proposed gym's a little, uh, a little larger, I think the existing gym's seventy-eight hundred and this is nine thousand, so it's a little bit bigger. It gives you the ability to get all the kids in there, you know, the whole school assembly and bleachers.
Yes, I have been to the graduation twice and look forward to one more this spring and it's a very tight fit currently, so.
Okay, we have a video of the space, do you have a few?
Yep.
Oh, I know.
Okay, so this is coming in, um, kind of that main entrance off of the main street, but there are four entries to the gym. Uh, there's clear story on the east and west side, so you'll have kind of ample natural light in the gym. And you can see all the hoops for either the competition court or the two cross courts, the bleachers are closed in this view. And you can see that sort of orange line down the center, that's where you would have your kind of movable curtain to divide the gym into two separate spaces.
And that's a batting cage that's up there and the ceiling retracted right now. And then mats that are hoisted up, that black thing is a mat.
What?
So we don't have to store them in storage rooms, we just fly them.
So this is looking back out towards the main street, so this is sort of the, you know, you've got some glass into the main street. And that's the, one of the other egresses that takes you right to a stair kind of across the bridge, that's also eight feet wide.
I'm super excited about having the mats up there, cause if you visit our school now, you see the cheerleading mats or wrestling mats are always on, you know, around and it's just, that's just, it's gonna make a big difference.
And with, you know, high clear story, high ceiling, all of that, we are still energy efficient, we are insulated and taking advantage of all of the opportunities to save money in heating and cooling.
Yes, and actually, all that natural daylight coming in, you won't have to put on the lights during the day either. And it's translucent panels, so you won't have to worry about, you know, a lot of glare inside the gym when you're playing. It'll just glow. Okay. And then last space.
We've got one more space. So we were just gonna talk about art classrooms briefly. So the art classrooms are up on the second floor, again, accessible, you know, from the bridge or the elevators, um, but they're across from the gym. So we have three art classrooms. Oh, sorry, I went the wrong way. Um, there are three art classrooms, uh, with, uh, two prep rooms kind of between the art classrooms, so one of the prep rooms will have, um, the kiln. And, uh, the other prep room will be more kind of storage of materials and supplies. So each, uh, art classroom has, you know, a big teaching wall, um, right now it's on the north, we're considering maybe moving it to the east wall here. Um, but we have a, a, a teaching wall with a whiteboard and a projection screen, I mean, with a short throw projector. And then we have a big pin-up wall. And then there's also a wall of, um, you know, cabinetry for storage and sinks. So the, all three art classrooms are identical. And, um, we do have some clear story lighting, um, on the north, you can't just peek it right here in the corner, so, um, the art classrooms just have this one big window, but they will be getting, um, some north light, so some nice kind of even, uh, natural daylighting throughout the day.
And we imagine that corridor that's, you know, along the gym is probably gonna be like a really nice gallery, so we'll put up pin-up space and display cabinets, so when people are coming out to use the restrooms during a break, they're gonna be able to admire all the student work that'll be hanging up in that corridor too.
So you can see here, these are some of the display cases we have built in that will, you know, you'll view from the corridor, you also have, we have some borrowed light, so you'll get some glimpses into those art classrooms. And as Tina mentioned, we'll have, you know, pin-up, uh, along this corridor, so it can be a nice gallery wall. And that's it.
The number of bathrooms you have there, is that because of the sod, are they required by code because of the number of people at the gym?
Yep.
And there was, there was some discussion in the community about, uh, having three art rooms. Um, there are three art rooms currently at Runlet. Um, I, I think they're a little bit more unevenly sized at Runlet and, um, comparing, comparing the size of these to those, is this similar or are these bigger and obviously more uniform?
I think these are as big as their biggest one.
I think the biggest one is maybe almost just a little bit bigger, um, but the smaller one is, I think, under nine hundred. So this more evenly distributes that square footage, so I think nine fifty.
Odd shaped too at Runlet, there's one that has like, I know the teachers hate it.
One's definitely a lot smaller than nine hundred square.
Yes.
And I know there are some visibility issues in, in one of those classrooms, it's really hard for the teacher to supervise kids because of the configuration here, we've got a nice simple rectangle that is easily, um, supervised.
And Mr. Sher, those are all busy all day long?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, our kids are using those art rooms, it's not just for our class, but there's often like kids doing enrichment things down with our, our teachers and wingtime, yeah.
And when we meet the next time, we'll talk about kind of the robotics and the, um, wood shop, which are right adjacent to art, so there's some nice synergies there, I know they share some supplies and, um, you know, they'll be able to work on projects together if they want to.
When we speak of wood shop, it's not just people in there sawing and cutting, it's more of a tech area, correct?
Yep, so I think we've been, we've been calling those spaces career pathways, so there are three spaces in the building, there's sort of the food tech space, um, the robotic space and kind of the wood shop maker space, so, yes, and that, those can be used for a variety of activities.
And equipment for that will be chosen a little bit later, but we'll sit down and, I'm sure there's really interesting equipment that we can buy to replace some of the outdated equipment that they have in the wood shop now. So, it'll be more like a fabrication lab, yeah.
And is there a greenhouse right now at Runlet?
Oh, no, it's kind of sort of, yeah.
Kind of sort.
I'm happy to show it to you.
Is it once was and it's now no longer?
It's just a room with some windows, I personally wouldn't define it as a greenhouse.
Oh, okay.
And like what we're doing right now, we have, um, two teachers actually growing things for our cafeteria and advisory. And when you think of a greenhouse, there's new products that you can grow, stuff pretty much anywhere, so you don't necessarily need a greenhouse. Stop by and visit, I'll show it to you.
They're really cool, there's like equipment that has grow lights on it and it's compact, right? Is that what you have now? Yeah, it's very cool.
That's what we're using right now, so they just harvested it again today and all the greens go to use in the cafeteria. The cafeteria staff, to be clear, clean it properly and everything like that if the kids pick it, but, yeah, some really good stuff, so to grow things, you do not need like, like a greenhouse anymore, like you would think that you would.
So is there space in this new building where that equipment could be?
Yep.
Hydroponic equipment could be stored?
That's exactly what it is. Yeah, um, it, it can go in the food tech lab on the first floor, so our next meeting will bring you those, yep. And that's gonna be another flexible space too, right? They can use that for health class, they can use it for after-school activities, um, it can be really great space.
The intended cooking space is a lot of kids, I don't mean this, Judge W., but kids need to learn how to do hands-on stuff now, and I, I joke with the kids about cooking, that cooking isn't ordering from DoorDash.
Yeah.
Or, or things like that, you know, it's, so we want our kids doing hands-on activities like cooking and some stuff and, but I, I'm professionally excited about the kids having that opportunity to cook things again.
For sure. Does twenty-one CEUs do a lot of work with cooking?
They will, there will be a lot of people using that space, like right now, something I'm, I need to work on is getting some donations for just for the next couple of years for some like, uh, ovens, because the current kitchen equipment that we have is very old and outdated. Project of mine to try to get some donations to get some new kitchen stoves.
Go see Pitco.
What's that?
Pitco Fire Alert, they make all that stuff.
Yeah.
They're the ones that make the blodgered ovens and all that stuff.
Okay.
They're made right in blow.
You've probably driven by it a hundred times.
What's that?
I said he's probably driven by it a hundred times.
At least.
Yeah.
I actually converted the old Merrimack Farmers into their manufacturing space in nineteen eighty-four.
Wow, okay.
I was actually just gonna.
So we're on to the next item of our agenda?
I wanna talk about the gym.
Yeah, talking about the distance to the athletic field, so, you know, students can come out these doors and then head across this kind of short courtyard and then they're, you know, they're here at the athletic field, so it's, um, and I, I don't think it's all that far, I mean, we can measure the distance, um, yeah, we can put some dimensions on it for the next time.
What's the likelihood of flipping the auditorium with the gym space?
What's that?
What's the likelihood of flipping the auditorium with the gym space?
Not good at all. Nope.
Well, I mean, it's just a mirror image.
Yeah, no.
It's, it's a little more challenging, uh, the backside here is, um, you know, service, so we have a loading dock back here, you know, flipping that would put the loading dock in the front of your building, so that's one of the challenges.
I see.
And the geothermal system is, that mechanical's in there, so the geothermal's back there kind of piping to it, so there's, the, the drawings are pretty far along, I know we still have a good chunk of time to go, but we're hoping the geothermal wells will start getting installed in, uh, April, so.
Are you positive you're going with geothermal and not something else?
Well, let's go to our next step sides because the test well is coming up soon. So unless the test well tells us something we don't like, um, yeah, so we have, first thing coming up, the CPT test, we were talking about that earlier, that's to see if we can reduce the number of rammed aggregate piers that we're carrying right now for the foundations, that will hopefully allow us to reduce that and save some money. Um, and again, those are because we found that we have liquefaction with the soil that we have out there, so. Um, the next thing up is the geothermal, uh, test well, that's on the seventeenth. Um, and then we start the different submissions that we have to go through for the city and for planning, so the Architectural Design Review Commission is the sixth, the sixth.
Oh, what happened there?
January, that's January sixth, yeah. Um, and then the alteration of terrain permit submission, January fifteenth, planning board on the twenty-first. Um, and then we're hoping to have the building permit for site prep on February twenty-first. So that means Harvey can come in and, you know, basically put up the construction fence and put the trailers in place and start getting the site ready for the wells. And, um, we're hoping that we can start them earlier than April, but we'll have to see how the alteration of terrain permit goes, cause sometimes that takes a while through the city. Um, and then, so sixty percent construction documents will be done on April first as well, and that's when we'll do another estimate to see where we are. Um, we will also do an early bid package at that time for foundations and for steel, so that Harvey can start putting that up, so we're kind of phasing in the start of construction to speed things up and save money. Um, and the sixty percent estimate will be back on May first and hopefully we'll have good news that we're lower than what we thought we were.
Questions?
Are we putting this out to public bid? I mean, Harvey's preparing the estimate, but.
But it'll go out to public bid.
When it's gonna go out to public bid.
So when they bid out for the, uh, pre-construction, they also bid out for the CM, so the board will have the opportunity, they had three bidders that bid for that. Harvey was the lowest, they have the option at the end of this contract to continue on with Harvey or put it back out. Obviously, that changes that timeline too. So that is.
They've significantly improved the price. I mean, you don't know the three bidders, they could be different bidders than we had the first time.
Sure, yeah. You're talking just for the CM, not for the project itself.
I'm talking about for the project.
Project itself.
No, though, it's gonna be a CM at risk, it's not a bid, design bid build.
So the CM.
The CM will work with us in bidding out all the, and we will see those bids.
So, and you're not putting out back for another CM bid, you're gonna run with Harvey?
That's gonna be the board's decision on why did they do that, but they have already put that out to bid.
I remember that.
Yeah, and now it's a matter of do they wanna do it again?
I remember listening to the three bidders come in and do their presentations and all that. But I thought it was going out to public bid when it was all said and done, when the drawings are done.
For all the work, yes.
All the subcontract.
I mean, it just subs, I'm talking about the whole thing, is the general contractor.
Again, it's an option for the board to decide whether they wanna go out the bid or continue with Harvey. Harvey was the low bid when they did that time. So they could say, nope, we wanna go back to back.
But that was based on budget, you know, drawings that were just architectural in concept and it's based on.
Yeah, but they.
A wing and a prayer as far as the estimate.
Sure.
You know, they had some experience doing schools, obviously, they did the one in Nashville. But that doesn't necessarily mean when you got hard documents that you go to bid and you might find.
Yeah.
Another bidder that would be significantly lower.
Sure. And, and we could pull what those were, but it was a percentage, it wasn't a fixed dollar amount, they didn't bid the price on the job.
But this way, if you bid it, it would be a fixed dollar amount, you would get a hard number.
Well, ultimately, we're gonna get a GMP, yeah, but.
Not just a GMP, but you'd get a fixed price, lump sum bid, this is what it's gonna cost, unless we run into change orders, soil conditions, things happen, but beyond that, it would be a hard number and there's no guaranteed maximum price, it's the price.
I, I, I think that'd be a different method of, of bidding it out.
It's a different construction delivery method that you're explaining, I follow you.
Right.
So if they wanna avoid this.
So that would be up to the school board to determine if they chose to go down that road. And then Harvey could certainly bid on it.
Sure.
He'd be one of, however many chose to go after it.
Again, and if I could jump in, you were on the selection committee when they did the three contractors. So when they submitted, each one of them submitted a percentage of the project cost, and that's where Jack was relating to.
And I remember all that.
Right.
But I also thought at the end of all this, that was only for, uh, construction managers to get the estimate done and so forth, we paid them a fee to do that. But at the end of this, when the drawings are done, it's going to public bid, that was my understanding.
I think we, we put in that option, and as we described, the board to make that decision, we wanted to see how, um, pre-construction went, and then if it was going well, and it, it has so far, that we would offer that up to the board to give them an out if they wanted to, to go back out to bid.
Since then, though, however, because we were counting on state funding aid, which is evaporated. And so now we're kind of in a pickle here where we've gotta put up the money for the whole thing, and we're talking a lot of money. So I would be more interested in finding out what the fa, hard number is and putting it public bid. And if, if Harvey comes in, I mean, they can use the same percentage they did on the CM offer, or more or less, whatever they thought the market would bear, but it would be more beneficial, I think, for the city to go up to a public bid, to get as many possible numbers as we can. And if Harvey's a little bitter, God bless him, and I'm, but if they're not, then. is I think that's one of the ones that we look at, but if you wouldn't mind going back to the last slide, I think if we, if we wait till we get to a full bid package, we're.
August first.
August first, so that would be, particularly if you're looking at an early bid package, which I think was one of the things that, that we looked at to make sure we could move the project along in a, in a, in a good manner. So if we waited till we were fully designed, it would be a little bit further down the road, and obviously all the conditions that we would carry up until then would be part of it. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding would be that all the subs will bid by trade, by division, so.
Correct.
Those, what we, what we wouldn't see would be the CM, but they've bid for a certain markup, so overall, it's a, you know, it's a balance a little bit. And I, I don't say I disagree with you, but I, I think, you know, looking at the time and the cost that it's gonna take to, to support the project going on, conceivably it could be another, you know, four or five months to do it, so it's, it's ultimately.
Let me ask the question of, you know, can the architect improve on delivery for a hundred percent drawings sooner? You know, could we get those in June or, you know, the beginning of June? We're still talking seven, eight months. And that's, I mean, I don't know how many people you have on staff, but you could do an awful lot of drafting in seven or eight months. And so.
We've already improved on the schedule by saying that we're gonna do the early bid packages and get foundations and steel out in April. So that's already speeding up those packages as well as the geothermal wells in hopefully earlier than, you know, March, February.
Is there any improvement there? I mean, could we gain back a month or two?
We already did because we said we were gonna be, I think it was September or October when we first had our schedule. So we improved our end date, but we also improved by doing the early bid packages, and that ended up saving the project two million dollars, so. I think that's about as good as we can get. We need to make sure the details are done right.
Of course. But, you know, like I said, there's, we've got six months, seven months to get that done. And it seems to me that we're far enough along so that those other engineers that need to be working on it, you know, the structural people and so forth could be.
They are working on it, they are. But, you know, and it takes coordination, right? So we have more than just structural and mechanical, electrical and plumbing, fire protection, we have to coordinate all of their work with our work, and so that takes time too. And you don't want to, you know, skimp time on that because construction will be a nightmare. So we've gotta cross the Ts and dot the Is.
I understand.
So we got finance plans, tax credit plans, and investment plans, because if we get this money and depending on the financial plan the board chooses, there's gonna be a lot of options. We'll determine the investment plan, while that money will not be all drawn at once, we wanna earn interest on it. We have to do the bond authorization, which will be coming soon, because you authorize a project and then the bonds will get picked and sold as we need them. Do we do it all at once? Do we do it in a layered approach? When we did the project fifteen years ago, again, we borrowed seven and a half million less than what was budgeted, and it came in seven and a half million less, so we didn't need to bond that next part. So when you see the number, you're gonna see the whole total project. And then the bonds fill in the credit, almost like it's a credit card, but then you only use what you use, okay? And then there's logistics planning, this site will need a lot more of that. And then obviously the board, I believe, is a board vote and makes OPM, Matt, it will be the owner's project manager. I think the board has done that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they did that last week. So that's just a couple in addition to those steps, there'll be a lot more detail to come. Oh, and one other thing, which I know is my little kind of bugaboo, policy seven thirty-four, the naming rights to the new school. Always drives me crazy when I see the old thing, Conant Rumford, Dane Eastman, and Walker, Walker, Kimball Walker, because that's what we called the three new schools, because they weren't named until after the plans were built. So it'd be nice to get the naming process, and seven thirty-five lays that out, and then this way you can name the documents what the school will be named. And I think that'll be a fun part, the kids and the community getting involved, so.
Ray, you got some Ray Brewer middle school?
Okay, go ahead.
So it sounds, if I'm understanding correctly, April is when trailers start coming in, the fences start going up. What's the plan for spring athletics, fall athletics, you know, what?
Great question, I mean, this is, this is a moving target, I mean, when we talk about.
I've been, several meetings on this already. Again, we've, we've been talking with NHTI, Merrimack Valley, we're meeting with Dave Gill from the city next week to talk about U.S. Park and Rec Fields. We've explored spaces and fields up by Broken Ground, Beaver Meadow, we're looking at a space owned by a county as well in the area. We've reached out to St. Paul Schools as well, and we are also giving the current state a track in our city. Down at Memorial Field, looking at Pembroke Academy as well as a partner during these transitional times, so multiple schools in the area as well as parks and recs. Our partners in the higher education, NHTI and our local prep school have been people we've reached out to. In addition, we, we've taken into consideration that it's easier for high school to transport at some times when it comes to practices, a greater distance than it would be for the middle schoolers, so we would see the middle school having some access to Memorial Field and some of our high school athletics being moved to another field at one of these partners that we just mentioned, so. I would, I wish Steve Largie was here tonight, I rambled off a bunch of people we've talked to, he has a better idea, and I would say after we meet with the city parks and rec in the next couple of weeks, we pretty much will have a solidified, I, plan on how we're gonna accommodate during the time that Runlet's under construction.
Thank you. Does the administration have anything else for this evening? HMFH, are you good?
We're good, thank you.
All right, then I will adjourn. Thank you, everyone, and we'll meet next month.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.